Thank you for being here, I appreciate it. All right, then we'll move right along here. I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Montego Planning Commission, January two thousand twenty-three, six oh five. Roll call. Ed Provo here, Greg Malu, Dan Brown, Alex Mosley, Dan Sargent, Greg Rollins, Katie Trayhan, Richard Black. Thank you all. Mayor, would you like to start this off?
I would. The next item on the agenda is election of new officers. Unless there's a suggestion, I'll be chairing this portion of the meeting. Is there a nomination for office of chairman of the Montego Regional Planning Commission?
I'd like to nominate Ed Provo.
Is there a second to that nomination? Ed, do you agree to accept the position?
I do, thank you, sir.
Is there any discussion or are there not, no, I'm sorry, are there other nominations from the floor for election of chairman? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Office of vice chairman?
I would propose Richard Black, resume his office as vice chair of this commission.
Is there a second to that motion? Any other nominations from the floor for the office of vice chair? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen. You, as chairman, may want to appoint the chairman to secretary for signature on any necessary planning documents. Yes, whoever you select. I don't think that needs an election.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all. We're gonna do our best to serve this community.
Do we, sorry, secretary? Do we have, did we make a nominee?
That's up to, as far as I'm concerned, it's up to the chairman to vote.
What would you like?
I think the secretary also needs to be nominated and voted on.
We, uh, we had a discussion about that, that we did not think it was fair for commissioners to have to sit here and take notes, and also try to comprehend what was going on in the meeting, and have a reasonable amount of time to have them vote. Just didn't work out. We've asked our city reporter Debbie to take minutes. There will be more of a minimalist set of minutes because we will have video and audio to refer to if we need to. So, having said that, the reason we did that, and the reason we have pushed this submittal date out, is to give these new commissioners and existing commissioners time to really re-ruse and understand what's in front of them and make intelligent decisions. So, moving forward, that's what we'll do. We need to make a vote on that, I think, do we not?
You just need to vote on the secretary. If that's the case, and the city reporter will then be in charge of taking minutes, the secretary's role would be just to be able to sign
Sign documents.
Documents, once they're approved by the planning commission. Or, they would sign staff-approved plots.
Does Debbie not have that responsibility?
No.
Since she's not on the commission?
Uh, no. It has to be a secretary of the planning commission.
I am open to recommendations for secretary of this planning commission. The job we just discussed. Anyone make a suggestion? I will nominate Katie Trayhan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on with new business now, if we could.
Approval of the
Yes. Approval of the past minutes. Don't know if y'all have time to look at them, but I'm going to ask for a recommendation for approval of the minutes.
The move the minutes be approved as submitted?
Second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, who seconded? Excuse me, who seconded? Richard?
Richard.
Thank you.
Staff and community reports. Do we have anybody making staff or community reports, does it not?
I don't have any.
Anyone? Okay. Old business. Building permit expiration zoning code minutes. Nate Wilson.
I'm waiting on y'all for the workshop, so.
Correct.
I've sent you the email. You now have all that language in your inbox.
Okay, so for the purpose of this meeting, Nate has communicated with me the issues that we need to address to move this forward to the council, to their approval. This will be on our next agenda?
Uh, it can be. Uh, the last, at the workshop, you discussed language being checked on by M-Tas?
I, I don't know. I was told that that was, the conversation was stopped so that somebody else could discuss it, and I don't know whether, where that conversation happened.
My recommendation, we put it on the next agenda. We communicate and we cover some ground between now and then, so it may take another meeting or two, but we move forward. Any recommendations? Commissioners? Any discussion? Seven forty, West Main Street site plan, convenience store, restaurant, fuel station. This is a continuing project with us that has come across many times. The mayor's had a recent conversation with the owner and his designers, and I'll ask him to comment on that, if you will.
I had, the biggest concern, landscaping, they seem to have addressed, and we have to decide on that. And contacting T-Dot and doing some landscaping on the right of it. The Department of Transportation had no problem with that. The question is, even, it's not on their property, so does that satisfy the landscape ordinance? That's one issue to be decided. The other issue is the thirty-foot right-of-way setback at the rear of the building to the property line. And they had asked for a VCA meeting to see if that couldn't be addressed. Other than that, there were no other issues that they knew of that were present. There was a lot of discussion about traffic and ingress and egress. But that seems to have been addressed by their several ingress, egress ports.
I would also add that, based on that review that I included in your agenda packet on page twelve and thirteen, they need to have stormwater and drainage plants associated with their site plan. And I hadn't seen anything submitted with those plans. And so I made a comment to them. They said that they were going to have final drawings, be designed by stormwater experts later, but I confirmed that it is a requirement for site plan approval. So, I haven't heard anything back about that.
That was not addressed at our meeting.
Okay.
So, we have a somewhat of a procedural issue here. We tabled this once. We can't table it again. We have commissioners that would like to question their representatives about issues. They have issues with Anya that need to be addressed. I don't wanna keep holding them up, but we're gonna make them come back and talk to us again. Okay? But to do that, we're gonna have to reject their proposal at this meeting, if that is my understanding.
Yeah, so you reject, you deny the site plan, uh, based on there's no representative?
Will they be able to get on our next agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, any comments or concerns?
Is there any other reason to reject it, to deny it?
I mean, all those playlists that's on page twelve and thirteen.
Well, I would rather the record show that, rather than my, their non-appearance, as I've stated earlier, their non-appearance, based on my conversation.
I would make a motion that we deny the request for seven forty West Main Street, based on the issues that we've discussed, and including there's no representation.
Yes.
Second? Commissioners, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
May I ask a question out of ignorance? Is it possible to avoid having an application of this sort put on the agenda when it, if it is still lacking things like a drainage plant?
Yes.
So that, so that it doesn't come to the commission, which at that point only can approve or deny.
Right.
And it's, to some extent, incomplete.
Yes.
They should draw now. Should they withdraw there?
They should. Yeah, I think I'm gonna be doing that more frequently in the future. If I get a site plan that doesn't have those items, I'm just gonna say, especially when they're missing that many items, I can't put it on the, uh, agenda, because it's an incomplete submission.
We support her efforts to slow these things down. We have a learning curve we have to go through, and unfortunately, we're going to have to do that if it happens. Okay, so we have, I think we were past that it was going to be denied, correct? And I apologize, I did not ask for comments from the audience. Excuse me, I'm gonna retract and see if we have any comments from the audience on that before we move on. Thank you. Item C. Highway residential subdivision preliminary class. Reagan Smith, gentlemen, welcome back.
Thank you. My name is Brad Bracken. I'm a landscape architect, Reagan Smith, and with me is Tran Walker. He's a civil engineer. So, our proposal is, um, a fifty-acre site. It's currently zoned R1, and we're presenting an R1 compliant site plan. Lot sizes are ten thousand square foot minimum, but many are larger than that. Hundred-foot minimum frontage, for the lot frontage, so they're all hundred-foot wide minimum. Many are larger than that. So, our intent is to create a mountain residential neighborhood. We want to try and save as many trees as possible. We want it to look like it's been there for many years once it's constructed, so. This site has quite a few constraints and challenges when it's topo. Uh, we've got a lot of gray change, a lot of gulls and valleys. We've got streams. We've got one isolated wet one. Uh, we have a gas line easement that transsects the property here. Uh, we have an overhead electric easement that is on Rin's Nest here. Uh, so, in the site planning process, we've looked at all those constraints, and I really feel like we've come up with the best way to lay out the site, to work with the top, the topography, to preserve as many trees as possible, so that's our intent. Some features of the design, we've got two entrances, one off Rin's Nest and one off forty-one. So, there's the forty-one, there's your Rin's Nest, so the two entrances. We've got three park areas, one main park here, one park at the entry, and then one park here on forty-one. So, that's sort of a big overview of the site plan and just the main points of it. Um, we've done a good bit of work on this before we've come to, obviously, we've surveyed, we've done a traffic study, we've had a surface waters report, performed environmental study. Uh, we've coordinated with T-Dot on our forty-one entrance location. We've got conceptual approval from them. So, we've done a lot of work, and I think we're coming to you prepared. And so, we'd like to try to push this along, if we can. We've done a lot of coordination with Travis. We've had a pre-op with him. We've had a pre-op with Anya's team. We've had follow-up conversations with Travis, mainly talking about sewer approach, and how we're going to serve the community from a sewer standpoint. We think we have the best approach for this type of development where you have a lot of topography. Uh, and we can talk more about that as we get into the sewer discussion. Uh, I'd like to just quickly show you some of the amenities. That look better upside down, I don't know. So, just real quickly, I just wanna show you the three park areas and just point out that the back, these will be, you know, amenitized areas with pickleball courts, lawn areas, dog park areas, pavilions, you know, hammock areas. It's gonna be very well-appointed amenity space. Another feature that we have that I wanted to point out is, around the perimeter of the site, we've got a trail buffer system that varies in width, and I think the minimum width is fifty feet, but in most places it's seven, uh, plus feet. So, that will be a tree buffer around the development, which I think is, is a nice feature. Uh, and the two entrances. So, this would be, um, a concept of what the entry sequence would look like. It would be gated, nice signage feature, landscaping. And we do, if we were to concept of having space for cars to pull in, stack, and be able to turn and pull out before they get to our entry, okay? That was a sort of a big picture overview of the project, and at this time, I think I'd like Tran to talk about our utility approach, and then some of the finer points of the traffic study, as well as some of the comments that we received on Rin's.
So, our approach to the layout on the waterline, first, we'd say there's an existing gravity sewer main that kind of comes through the property here, um, that we would protect the denisment, but we would also run our proposed waterline kind of parallel to that sewer line, maintaining the T-Dot recommended same deep minimum horizontal separation. We'd meet all the regulations there. We would create a loop system where we would connect to the main and Rin's Nest here. So, this, this, this system would create a loop here. So, we protect the site with many a car entrance, um, the site's pretty well-blanked in front of entrance. So, we forget about that. We also need the five hundred feet requirement per the subdivision regulations. The sewer line, due to the topography of the site, the road goes down, it goes up, it goes down again. And because we're trying to, you know, keep as many of the trees on the property intact as possible and eliminate disturbance, our approach to this was to install a force main sewer system, which would be in the road right-of-way. That's, you know, a very common way to do it for this kind of development. We feel like it's the best approach, and we've been kind of going back and forth with Travis, the engineer, on that approach. He wanted us to perhaps look into a gravity sewer main, uh, which we don't feel is a good idea. It would, it wouldn't work without multiple lift stations on the property. It would also require us to, you know, trench in the back of all these lots, cutting down trees. There's also perennial strains here that we don't want to impact the buffer on those. There's a thirty-foot bumper, just to further illustrate that. In this area of the site, it is drawn, and it's a, it's a string that's a state-protected water. There's a bumper associated with that. If we were to come in outside of that and do a sewer line, this would be a clear-cut site. And we don't want that. So, that's, that's why we're going with this approach, is we want to try to not clear-cut the side and destroy the character of the land, it's kind of the whole.
The sewer and more issues will have to be addressed with Travis.
We have been diligently on him to
We were waiting to hear from him, Mayor. If you want to comment about that, I think you've set up something to discuss this issue.
Thank you. There's a meeting, uh, I believe this Thursday with Travis to go over that. Yes. Thursday morning, I'll be meeting with Travis to discuss that point, but I'm sure he understood your objections, and you understood his, so what, just briefly again, if you would recap
Sure.
The force, uh, system is before the gravity.
So, when I was speaking with Travis about the sewer, and he said he would prefer it be a gravity sewer main, which the only way to make that possible is to come in the back of all these lots, and you would have multiple stream crossings, and you're basically trenching at the back of all these lots. And he said that that was what he was, you know, he wanted me to look at. But with what I'm proposing, I guess his main concern with the force main was that he said that the town did not want to take responsibility of the grinder pumps and the pumps on each property entrance, which wouldn't be, wouldn't be a thing, because it would be the responsibility of the homeowner to maintain their own pump. It would basically be the same thing as if you're on a gravity sewer main, and your home has a sewer lateral that ties into the sewer main. If you drive your truck in your backyard and you crush your pipe, it's your responsibility to fix that pipe. It's no different with a grinder pump or a step pump. So, uh,
But what happens when the grinder pump sends it to its next stop? What, how does it get to the sewer plant?
It would be, it would, it would What would happen is, if this well were flushed and the grinder pump pumps it up to the manhole that's on the property where we would tie into, then it would become a gravity flush system, just like, you know, everything else would. So, basically, every one of these properties on, on the site here, would, it would pump it up to the manhole which we have tied into, at which point it would become gravity flow, and then
And who maintains those pumps?
The homeowner. Each, each
This well is the grinder pump?
Each lot would have their own pump for that system, and it would be the responsibility of the homeowner to maintain that pump in their lateral.
And that pump would send whatever to the gravity flow soil line?
That's correct.
But does it need a lift station to get out of your property to or from?
It does not.
It does not?
There's already a lift station off property that this gravity, this gravity sewer that runs through the corner of our property. Everything is going down to the, the lift station where it goes up to force main, which is that easement that vices the property, up to the treatment plant. So, everything that's going gravity into the sewer main
Right.
We would just tie into the sewer main and then turn into gravity like everybody else.
Have your discussions with Travis included the capacity of the existing lift station?
He has not noted any capacity deficiencies in our partnership.
Okay.
Is the gas line an issue?
We're crossing the gas line at one point here.
Which would be another reason why the gravity system Travis mentioned would be, we would have another crossing of the gas and, um, force mains.
And we're, just with the road crossing, we're crossing the gas line, we're not cutting
We're picking up the road so that we're not having to cut any of the existing gray. We're bringing everything up.
So, we're doing everything possible to stay away from the gas line?
Take this comment a step further. There's discussion of an easement? Would we need easement to maintain anything after a two-year period?
There's already an easement in place, um, to, I guess, the easement for the existing force main and gas, gas line. We're actually improving the access to that easement by providing a road here. The road would also be, um, inside of a accessing utility easement. Therefore, uh, the town or any, you know, anybody that needs access to this for any of the force mains or water mains would have right to do so.
And you've shared all these comments with Mr. Wilson?
That's correct.
Can I follow that up on Thursday?
All right. Any comments?
The vertical curve issue, uh, that would be if, because it's listed in the subregs, if you were to approve at this meeting, you would have to approve with a variance approving their proposed, um, vertical curves.
Okay, this is your topographical changes where you're not cutting and filling, you're keeping the gradient steep?
That's correct. Can I come around to that again? So, basically, what we're proposing on this side, because there's so much undulation, undulation with the topography, which, you know, is why this property is beautiful and why that our product, we're, you know, excited about our product. We didn't want to, um, with this, the subdivision regulations, need two hundred feet for stopping site distance. When you're approaching a curve like a hill, you have to be able to see two hundred feet so there's an object in the road and you have time to react and slow down and stop. That two hundred feet, if you reference the ASHTO, which is the policy that road design is based on, correlates to a thirty mile-per-hour road. Where, I designed this to a twenty-five mile-per-hour road, which is a hundred and fifty-five feet stopping site distance. All that means is that this vertical curve, which is able to kind of contour the hill a little bit better, rather than having to excavate the whole top of the hill off. Basically, your cuts are gonna be less, and then also on like sag, where, where it goes down to like a sag situation, you don't have to fill it up as high to make it a more gradual turn or a curve there.
So, what that means is basically, if we were to have to cut down the hill more, surely no limits of where we're at to return the grade on the hill.
Yeah, so any of these situations here would just be
You see, you see where our contours stop here?
That's where we're able to return the grade.
Which is a good thing, so we don't have a lot of disturbance. If we were to have to cut that down, we're gonna be returning grade way out here, and that means all that clearing, additional clearing has to take place.
And then those lots are also
It's just gonna ruin the character of the site.
Well, two questions. Does that affect your, isn't that your ingress, egress main gate?
There's, right here.
Yeah, so
We're out, there's a little bit of that here that I was talking about.
So, site vision, et cetera, et cetera, a problem for that ingress, egress area?
No.
Okay, that's number one. Number two, you're speaking of the roads within the development?
Yes, sir.
Has there been any addressing of the roads outside the development? Because the comment was made, and rightly so, out of Griffin Rin's Nest Road. It's a little windy, and I'm not sure that you have two hundred feet at twenty miles an hour or ten thousand, in some areas. So, is that something the developer would be addressing for proper entrance and egress from their property?
Rin's Nest isn't, it's a public right-of-way.
I understand.
It's not within all of the project property lines. It also meets, uh, T-Dot's requirements for the number of, the amount of traffic that we counted in our traffic study. Uh, we, we went out and did twelve-hour traffic counts at, uh, West Main and Rin's Nest. We did a few up on Rin's Nest. We did, uh, West Main, forty-one and Main. We did forty-one here at our proposed location. We did twelve-hour counts to see what the existing traffic was out there, but, and we have verified that the way that Rin's Nest Road is currently, we've even inspected visually, uh, it meets T-Dot's local road criteria as far as lane widths, shoulder widths, and everything else. So, we do not see any reason why that road needs to be improved whatsoever.
So, you don't have a vision, you don't anticipate the vision problem entering or coming out of your development relative to Rin's Nest Road?
The vision problem relates to the vertical curves, and Rin's Nest is a very flat, straight
Flat, but a little windy, so.
We have no concern.
There's no concern?
But aside from vision, you don't have any concern about that?
Okay, thank you, thank you. Commissioners, uh, comments or questions?
I have a couple of questions. One question I had was about the utilities in general. The, um, on here, it says that the surveyor cited them, but they're not verified, and that they would be verified at a later date, I think it said. Do you have anything?
What you probably meant there was the manhole minutes were probably cited, but the invert, which is basically the depth of the pipes, was not verified at the time of the survey. But we have since gone out on the property and shot those inverts and got an additional topographic data at access points, the existing utilities here, and the access point here. I think that's what you were asking. Does that answer your question?
I, I guess, 'cause it just said utilities, so it wasn't specific. And, and so I, I mean, I didn't know, and for the site plan, it, it seems that all these utilities should be verified.
They are verified, we've, having done additional field studies.
So, we've been in court, so with the, with the utilities that run through the middle of the site, we've been in contact and coordination with the gas line company, and, you know, we, they're, they're aware of what we're trying to do. They've seen our site plan, and once, if we can get clarity, plot approval, we will begin, you know, their process. We know what the easement is for the force main. We're staying away from that, you know, by all standards. Besides one crossing, which we've, you know, mitigated. And the only other utility on the property, well, there is the TBA easement here, and we've reached out to them. So, we're in, we're in contact with TBA, and then we're also verifying the depths of this gravity sewer main that runs through the property. Besides that, uh, there is no other utility on, on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or concerns, Commissioner?
On the lift stations, uh, you're gonna have On the lift stations, uh, you're gonna have lift stations that are gonna be, uh, you're gonna bring more than one resident to a lift station, there'll be several on one lift station, right?
That, actually, that is what we're trying to avoid. What our system is, is it would be each property would have their own grinder pump, or we prefer a step system, which is you would have a tank that would hold your solids, and then you would have a pump that would pump your effluent, and that would pump that effluent over to the existing gravity sewer main. There would be no lift station, um, on the property.
But your gravity, your, I mean, your, the pumps will all be, uh, they'll be facilitating more than one dwelling, right?
They would only facilitate, each, each person would have their own pump that would facilitate only themselves.
Per lot?
Per lot. Alan?
Uh, since you've assumed for safety purposes a maximum speed of twenty-five miles per hour, with private roads, as I understand it, you would get no law enforcement help in enforcing that. So you, are you considering some kind of passive measures to try to keep people's speed down?
Well, honestly, it's gonna be, it's gonna be reckless to go much back, to go faster than that anyway. With a hundred-foot, you know, radius turns and just the topography of the site, I think that people are gonna be driving slower than us for hours. You're not gonna wanna be, you know, going around these curves at that speed. So I think it's just the, the lanes and turns of the road is just gonna require people to drive more, more carefully and more slowly. Um, and, you know, the subdivision regulations allow for a hundred-foot horizontal curvature in all these, and this meets that regulation. We also have hundred-foot tangents between curves. So we feel like with the way that this road is laid out, um, thirty miles per hour, which is what the subdivision regulations kind of parallel to, seem kind of crazy to us, so we need to be lucky enough to do that.
Thank you. Further comments or concerns, Commissioner?
Can we go back to, uh, Dan's question regarding individual, uh, grinder pumps here? Uh, so typically, those grinder pumps would pump off the, uh, that person's property, and that would go into the roadway. Uh, so what's gonna carry that wastewater from that roadway back to the substation near forty-one? Is that a, is that a gravity flow all the way back to that location?
Correct, so there's an existing gravity flow main that runs through the corner of the property here, and this would be a public force main, which the grinder pump would pump into the force main, force that flow into the point which we would tie into that existing gravity main at the manhole, which is what Travis recommended we do, is tie into the, one of the existing manholes on the property.
That's why you're gonna put it in the road?
That's correct. And the manhole actually sits just off our proposed road, and we would just tie into it very nicely. And then it would be a gravity flow down to the, the pump station, uh, down forty-one.
Thank you. And one additional question. Will both entrances to the property be egress, egress?
Yes.
Yes.
Further questions, concerns?
Uh, how many lots are in?
There's eighty-three shown on the flat, but there's eighty-two building sites. One of them is a community lot for a park, so there's eighty-two building sites.
It just seems like to me, and I, I've seen Rensnest, it's, you know, a gentleman that said earlier that, you know, it's not even wide enough for, uh, to have a painted little li- line. It's like, now you're adding eighty, eighty-two families, two cars per family, that's a lot of additional traffic going on through Rensnest, and, um, that particular intersection is, isn't very safe. So I, I'm concerned with the traffic, you know, we've got a lot of questions about the sewage and where it's going, how it's gonna get there. Uh, but I'm more concerned with what the traffic is, it's gonna come in and out and pulling out on the main street.
So one thing I would, I do want to comment on that, um, with the way that we did the traffic analysis, um, you know, we, we analyze each interception and kind of the way the T-Dot process works is you do the counts, you add the traffic generated by the development, which is straight out of the book, the number generated. And then you distribute the traffic in the morning and PM, peak hours, rush hours. And then you analyze each intersection to see how much increased delay or how much, you know, you're sitting at a stop sign waiting to go, how much more time you're gonna have to wait due to the development traffic. And we did that for each one, and the delay was negligible. Actually, the, the amount of traffic on, on every intersection was extremely low, uh, when we took counts in September. And the beauty behind what you said was, since we have two access points, you know, I would use this access point if it were me, because I would prefer to go that route to avoid this intersection. But we, we analyzed it conservatively, put half the traffic at this one, half the traffic at that one, just to see what it would do, if it would impact that intersection, the problem intersection down here. And it really, it only added, I think, point three seconds in delay to that intersection, because there's only six or seven cars in the rush hour that are leaving at this, at each access point in the morning, evening, peak hours.
There you go.
So.
No, they're just, how many per minute?
So, per hour, so when you look at the, the traffic, it's the rush hour, so it's one hour, the highest hour of traffic. You've only got six cars in the AM turning in each one of these, and you've only got fourteen cars turning in in the PM. All, that's just for the, the highest hour of traffic.
That's, that doesn't seem very high.
Yeah, that's, that's not, that actually is not right.
It's just, I mean, that's.
I think, if you're crunching numbers.
Commissioners, please?
In reality, that's just not correct.
Let's hold on, let's hold on, we're gonna be, I give to you. Further, uh, further concerns, questions?
Just me and the conversation earlier about the T-Dot road and everything?
We did, and I'm gonna make, make note of that after we get our group comments. Further, I'm gonna ask that we take comments from the audience, please. Gentlemen in the back first.
Okay, and I'll, I'll try and be quick with that.
Thank you.
Again, I, I don't mean to be adversarial, I'm just, there's a lot of, there's a lot of concerns. So one, one thing, um, Mayor, when you talked to, uh, when you guys sat down with the, about the sewer thing on Thursday, um, what, and they're looking at either a force main or the gravity feed. Obviously, we have, we have suggested a gravity feed. One of the reasons that I think, and I understand them not wanting to ruin a couple lots, but a design standpoint is where they're coming from to use the force instead of the gravity feed. And, and while, while I apologize, it may make you lose a few lots or something, um, I'm not sure the tree issue is really a viable thing. So I think the city needs to really take into consideration what they want, and, and there's a possible redesign of this site plan, and a lot or two may be lost or switched or something like that.
We would lose any lots.
So, okay, well then, then that, that's great. Um, the other thing is, um, the, the Rensnest Avenue, um, thing. We live up here, we, we know what, what a cluster that thing is. I'm not sure what twelve-hour period or what day of the week and all that your traffic study went through and all, but it is immense. And at any given time, there is no rush hour in Montegoal, by the way, um, but at any given time, that map code serves thousands and thousands of cars in, in a day easily. Um, so that, that whole, that whole intersection, the traffic study, I would really want, I would hope that the commissioners would want to see your traffic study and compare that to what, uh, what T-Dot requires, what T-Dot has found themselves, and possibly even have T-Dot, um, perform their own, own traffic study on that to make it a little bit more realistic about what's on the ground over there. Um, the buffer zone, um, I, I can't, can't read it on this particular one. You said it was thirty feet at a minimum and seventy-five feet. Okay, um, sure doesn't look like that on this drawing if, if this is to scale, um, and if I can barely read this thing, it looks like there's a twenty in here somewhere. But, uh, that buffer, especially on some of the residential lots that have been down there for a long time, seems a little bit thin, in my opinion. Um, I, we would request, as the neighborhood that's living there, a little bit larger buffer, uh, certainly on the, the back end, the away from McDonald's and, um, uh, and Katie brought up, uh, potential property values at another facility, at another discussion, another area in town about what might be the property values for subdivision. Um, I would say the same thing would apply here, certainly, um, an eighty, eighty-home, tiny home community coming in here, um, is a, is a property value, um, issue as well. Um, one of the things that, that you also mentioned in the, um, kind of the opening paragraph on the agenda item is about the eight hundred square foot homes to ten thousand square foot homes, um, point four acres roughly. Um, so this is, are you actually gonna be developing and putting, are you actually gonna be building larger than eight hundred square foot homes on this property?
It would be the oral on regulation, which is eight hundred.
Which is eight hundred, so, so the range of eight hundred to ten thousand square feet is really sound and realistic.
The lot size.
Not, not building.
Hopefully you don't have an eight hundred square foot, no, it said right here, eight hundred square foot homes, eight hundred to ten thousand square foot homes.
It says it on there, but it is distorted, but I think it meant eight hundred and ten thousand square foot lots. It does say what he said.
Yeah.
Further comments?
Okay, that's a miss, that's a misprint, and so these are all going to be eight hundred square foot homes, and are you all developing?
Or bigger, or bigger.
And, and is the individual homeowner, when they buy a lot, they build their own, or are you guys building?
It would be, when the homeowner buys a lot, they would build it out of themselves.
Picked from a package of options that they have, or, so they could put anything there? Prefab?
No, no.